A few members, so Marianna on her way and Tom can't say his excuse tonight. So we'll go ahead and take the roll call of who we've got. Corey Holmes, board member. Tyler Booth, board member.
Kim Dickerson.
Paul Swine, superintendent. Keith Draxton, business administrator.
Okay, well, and for meeting duration medium, I'm turning over to superintendent.
Great, thank you, Tyler. We decided to have a good discussion and see some presentations tonight at our study session. We're gonna start with, we're gonna start with director Sean Kelly is gonna introduce some guests that's here with him and give us a little, just a quick preview of what we will be discussing and we'll invite all those gentlemen to the table.
Do you guys wanna come up?
Sure.
You guys can sit right here. So this is Jason Hoops. He's with Ajax, is that how you say it?
Ajax.
Ajax. They're gonna present to us tonight an app for emergency response for from an active shooter to a throw up in the hall app. It was tied to our, what's it called? The dispatch has this app on their computers as well, so we'll relay them information. I'll turn the time over to Jason, I think he's gonna present, isn't he? And he will kinda walk you through and show you the app. We have representatives from Heber City, I'm sorry, I don't know you.
Brayden Powers.
Brayden Powers is here in place of the chief and Josh Probst was supposed to be here for the sheriff. I'm not sure if he's had a call or what, but they are, if he comes in, we'll let them talk about kinda what they think of this app. It's been presented to the superintendent and I one, two other times, and so tonight we want you guys to see what this might do for our students. Jason.
Okay. You mind if I stand up?
No.
You stand up. You're a little too gentle, I seat very long.
Just don't shoot it up like I'm anybody.
That's, that's what I'm worried about most. I became friends with Paul maybe three or four years ago through wrestling and then Sean a few months ago through wrestling. And it's interesting, my, well, my name is Jason Hoops, I'm from Star Valley, Wyoming, and we love wrestling there too. And years ago, at a little wrestling tournament, there was a little boy named, I can't remember if it was Spencer or Richie Haywood that wrestled one of my sons, yeah? And for some reason, this little boy, I was, I've talked to my wife, it's like, he is so outgoing, he's so, I don't remember if it was Richie or Spencer. But every time we saw this little boy at tournaments around the west, he would come up and treat my boys like they were his long lost cousins. He would treat me, he would talk to me, like, I just was so impressed at how well he talked to me as an adult. Well, fast forward now, one of my sons wrestled on the same team with Spencer at UVU. Another son wrestled at Penn State, or is wrestling at Penn State with Richie, did I get that right? Richie's out, was out there and just watched. Anyway, so it's been, it's been interesting to see how small the world is through wrestling. And I had to promise my colleague here that I wouldn't talk about wrestling very much. I got it, but I love that.
Don't worry, we get a steady dose.
So I also have a boy named Cael. And you can imagine how I spell that, right? C-A-E-L. And I, I knew about Wasatch wrestling years ago because of Cael Sanderson, right? I, I follow wrestling all over the place and I tracked Cael Sanderson through high school, tracked Cael Sanderson through college, watched him beat Daniel Cormier his junior year, watched it in person in Iowa. And then lo and behold, my second oldest son is now wrestling out there at Penn State. And I will tell you, even leaving wrestling aside, that if you had a boy that had the privilege of being under Cael Sanderson's tutelage and his brother Cody, is, it's the most amazing thing. My son, he just called me while I was sitting over there, he called me every day, gave me an update on how practice went, what coach Cael said, what he taught him. And I'm telling you, that guy, you can leave wrestling aside, and it's worth every ounce of effort, every penny of tuition, everything to have my boy under his influence. So I just, just tell you that, I know he's not your son, but he's from your town and I hope you're just as proud of him as, as I am. You ought to be, he is amazing, amazing, I could, I could talk for two days, literally. And I just want to. But anyway, I, so we were invited, are you Officer Probst by chance?
Yes.
Sorry, this is Josh Probst, he's the end of the sheriff. You know Darius Moore? He married into the Probst family.
There's a few ones.
Okay.
I still try to keep track of them.
I knew there's a crew over there, I knew there was a crew. So we were invited up here, what, it's been a month, month and a half, two months ago, to talk about safety and security. And one of the things that we noticed right away when we were up here, and I, this is what we do all day, every day, we visit with school districts all over the country. And one of the things that we noticed right away when we got here is how seriously the school district takes that. And I don't mean that lightly, one of the things we noticed is, and that we were super impressed by, is that the school district has SROs at every single building. I don't know, I don't, I doubt you take that for granted, but you sure, sure should. That's the first place we've been where every school building has an SRO. So that's just absolutely amazing. But the other thing that we appreciated about Sean and superintendent Swin is that they weren't done. You know, there's, there's more to do, what can we do to protect our kids? And so they had us up, and I'm gonna show you this app here in just a second. But I wanna tell you a little bit about Ajax Global. So Ajax AIM, so AIM is an acronym, A-I-M stands for Active Incident Management. And it was developed by a special operations soldier that was contracted to protect some schools over in the Middle East. And a lot of these schools had children of royalty and/or politicians' kids that were super important. And so he, he said they had, they, they had everything you could possibly imagine to protect the kids in these schools. I mean, they've got royalty in there. And when he came back to the states, he realized that wait, our, our kids are royalty too.
I was just gonna say, we have 9,000 of those kids.
Right, they're royalty too, and they deserve that same level of protection. So he developed this app. Now frankly, didn't really know how to kinda drive it out there into the marketplace and do that, he just developed a good app. And so we purchased that and brought in some of the best developers along the Wasatch front to keep it shipshape and moving forward. But that's how it kinda came to be. And so AIM is designed to handle any kind of incident as, as Sean said. So if you think about it on a scale of one to 10, you know, maybe five and below are those kinds of incidents that happen that you can handle internally. Just internal staff will take care of that. Maybe six and above would be incidents that you need the cavalry to come, all, all first responders or something like that. But on the low end, my principal, or my brother is a principal in Alpine School District, and he, he had a kid puke at the hall. And he wanted to do what he called a soft lockdown. In other words, teachers, just keep your kids in class, 'cause I don't want them tracking through the puke and tracking through the hallway. So just hold them in class for five or 10 minutes until we give you the all clears, they get it all cleaned up. So super simple. Three or four weeks ago, in Salt Lake City, one of their schools had a mountain lion out on the playground. So they wanted to do a lockdown or lock in, whatever they called that, to keep kids safe and sound until they got rid of the mountain lion. So that's maybe five and below. But on the upper end, and I, and I think what you all were probably thinking when you had us come up initially was Uvalde. And if you've ever been to, I've been to Uvalde a few times, and it's just a cute little dirt town on the Rio Grande River. And nothing like that would ever happen in Uvalde, but it did, right? So that would be certainly up on the, the 10 scale. So I wanted to share this app with you, and we don't have, I was planning about 20 minutes total. Take more or less, you just give me the work.
You took about 10 with wrestling.
Counting again, here.
Story of my life, right there.
I just wanted to mention if that mountain lion had been circling Star Valley High School, it would've been in danger.
It would've been, it would've been skidding on the wall by now, yeah. That's totally true.
There was a time it may have been like that around here.
Can you connect to that?
Yeah, I think so, let me try it one more time, I was connected for a second. Okay, I'll be there. Now, this is live on my phone, so you, you might see texts coming in from Virginia, Pennsylvania, from boys that check in usually tonight. Okay, so in the lower left-hand corner, you see that, that plus sign, that blue plus sign? That's the app that I'm gonna click on, okay? Now, there we go. This is what it looks like. Now, we intentionally tried to keep this as simple as humanly possible. If you've been in education for very long, you know that teachers are always saying, "Not one more thing." And the chief hallmark of great software is it takes, where it takes a bunch of clumsy or hard things and narrows it down to very simple and easy to follow steps. So we don't wanna add more things to teachers' plates, we wanna take things away and make it easier and more simple. So that was what we had in mind when this interface was developed, right? Keep it super simple. So if we're gonna start an alert, if, if a teacher sees something or hears something and they need to start an alert, you can imagine that there's pretty much one option up there to click on. But before I click on it, I wanna just point right below that big red button, "Start Drill." One of the things that makes it tough in, in school districts to, to, to always stay tuned up with your safety procedures is to go through those drills. Involves a lot of people, it's a lot of, it's a lot of work. So this makes it super easy to do a drill every time you get together every week as a staff. Quick, simple drill, everybody gets familiar with it, super easy to do. Right below there, at the very bottom, there are different tabs, and we'll hit a couple of those just due to time. But I just wanna give you navigation where we're going with this. So let's assume, another thing I just, I'll mention is that we, we hope this is used for all the little things. All the little things that can be handled internally, to make that simpler and easier for teachers. But it was designed to handle the big things, and if you can handle the big things well, then the littler things are quite a bit easier to handle. So I'm gonna assume, I'm gonna pretend we are, we're going through a drill or an incident that involves an active shooter, okay? So teacher clicks this red button, and the next thing they see are a list of icons that represent different types of alerts. So again, think about that scale of one to 10, some of those alerts, if they're pressed, will just notify internal people. Maybe if, for example, that brown one on the lower right, mental health crisis, maybe there's a, a mental health issue and really all you need to do is notify the counselors and the school nurse, right? They can handle it. But maybe it's something big, right? So we're gonna click on this lockdown. Now, a couple of things happen when I click on that button. There will be an audible sound on everybody's phone that are part of that alert. One of the things that makes this unique is that instead of just alerting 911, it does that. But instead of only alerting 911 or dispatch, it alerts everybody that's involved. So all first responders, if that button's pushed, all first responders get that notification right away. Same time, everybody in that building, the teachers, the staff members, they all get that alert at that same time, okay? So I'm gonna click on lockdown. Two things happen, two questions are asked of every person. Number one, where are you? And so I'm gonna select, "I am at the little gym," and I touch that with my thumb. And then the next question is, "Are you safe or unsafe?" And because I started the alert, I'm gonna click unsafe, all right? So next thing, then, if you look at this map, you can notice right away that, we're looking at city hall, but this is, we're gonna pretend this is a school district. But right away, if I zoom in, I can see where the problem is and where the problem is not. Now, as a first responder, Officer Probst, I'm gonna put you on the spot a little bit. If you, as you were driving to this incident, as you were responding, if you're looking at this map on your way there, what does that tell you that you might not know otherwise if you don't have access to that map?
What does that tell me if you don't have access to that?
Yeah, right, right away, what can you look at that map and notice?
Library.
Library.
Location.
Okay.
Specific location.
Okay, you can go right to the place where the hotspot is. Now, if I...
That's, that's green, you got, I can see it up there, the gym is red, and that's what you said first.
Right, okay, yeah, so that's the point though, is right away, with just colors, I know a lot of things. Now, most of the time, first responders, if they don't know otherwise, they're gonna respond to the, the front of the building. And that's, that's well and good, but what if the issue is at the back of the building? One of the things that we hear all the time is saving time saves lives, right? So responding to the front of the building versus the back of the building where the issue is, that, that takes time. We've got a buddy that we work with that was former LAPD and he responded to two different active shooter situations in LA. And he said as he was going down the hallway, literally with his finger on the trigger, he had, he knew that the issue was that way, but he had to clear rooms as he went, couldn't just charge in, 'cause he just had to assume that there is, that there's an ambush around every corner. That's kinda, that's the way you have to assume if you're a first responder in that setting, right? But he said as he was going down the hallway with his gun drawn and finger on the, on the, on the trigger, he said, "Teachers poking their head out the door, saying, 'Hey, is it okay to come out yet? Everything okay? What's next?'" And he, it, it caused some massive, massive concern with him because he almost shot a teacher. So right away, they can avoid a lot of that by responding right to where the, the issue is. And I wanna point out a couple of things though. There are other safety systems that have maps, where this is unique. And when I use the word unique, I mean unique in, in that this is, it's only found right here. Is that this map is live and interactive. Instead of just the one time, here's the red dot, here's the issue, it's live and interactive in that teachers get to respond how they are currently and they can change that, "I'm now unsafe, I used to be safe, now I'm unsafe." First responders, if they were to set up a command post, they can have their commander, there, as they're entering, they can radio, "Hey, room 123 is clear." And the commander can touch 123 and change that to blue, indicating that that room is clear, all right? So the fact that that's live and interactive gives responders a ton of information in a super clear way. Another thing that makes this unique is that it, we have a patent that allows us to overlay this on top of Google Maps. Not that big of a deal if our local first responders are handling, 'cause probably most of them know the lay of the land. I think about where I went to high, where my kids go to high school in Wyoming, if there were a, a very big incident, we would have people responding from Jackson Hole as well. They don't know the lay of the land. They're gonna respond at the front of the building unless they know, "Hey, the, the parking lot back by the football field is where the issue is." So they can see right away, even if they're not familiar with this place, where they should turn, where they should go to get to the incident the quickest, okay? So that's the map, and I'm, I'm not gonna show you a lot more about it, but as, if, if you all took your school board member hats off, put on a first responder hat, think about how you would respond differently having that information instantly and at your fingertips. All righty, let's take a peek at the next thing. So while this map is lighting up in real time, simultaneously, every single person that's part of this alert. Now remember, we clicked the lockdown, so that's alerting all first responders, it's also alerting every teacher in the building, every staff member. So while this map is happening, the same, at the same time, this chat, so right down below, I'm gonna click on that little chat tab, that takes me to a live chat that every single person that's part of this incident can now respond to. "I'm safe," or "I heard this, I heard that, I saw," you notice they can post pictures, "I saw these guys out in the, out in the parking lot." So this live, now, now in real, and, and this is kind of a training issue, but in real time, your teachers will probably be trained to don't put any unnecessary information in this chat, right? Only put relevant, meaningful information, 'cause otherwise, first responders can already look at the map and say who's safe and who isn't, right? So if you need something more specific, then put that in the chat. But the point is, every single person that's part of this incident now has the opportunity to communicate with everybody that's responding to this incident. So in, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pick on you, and I don't remember your last name, Powers.
Powers.
Powers, okay, Officer Powers. When responding to an information or, or any kind of an incident, a lot of times, people that don't do what you do for a living think that communication is always free and clear and open and everything's fine and dandy. When you're responding to a big, a big situation, tell us how communication usually goes.
It's usually a cluster, right? Everyone wants to say that they're going or they're going, or "I'm at this location, I'm at this location," when really everyone should just be heading that way anyway, right? And if there's a problem, just go there and deal with it. The idea is that we keep the channel, all lines of communication open, so that if there is absolutely important information, it can get out and we're not clogging the radio for something else.
So how would you use something like that, or how do you see that helping you as a first responder?
Well, it, for radio purposes, it keeps it open, but then it also, it's a constant open where you're not blocking on people. We call it blocking on somebody if you're trying to queue up to say something. You're not really blocking on people, you're just getting a constant flow of information without really losing some lag.
Okay, very good, very good. So, saving time saves lives, we talked about that. We talked, I think, about what FEMA said, that in any crisis, information is every bit as critical as food and water. We didn't talk about that, I think it's obvious to everybody. But I wanted to share that with you for a, a couple of reasons. Those are just two really significant, really unique functions of this, this platform. But I want you to, I wanna put it in perspective now. In Uvalde, I don't know how many of you followed the details of Uvalde. We did. The bad guy is coming towards the school, and I don't know if it was divine intervention or what, but he crashes. But he crashes outside of a church on his way there, just down the road from the, the school. People in the church come out to help the guy. He starts shooting at them. Well, that sound is what alerted a teacher who was down the street in the parking lot of the school. She hears the shooting, sees the bad guy down the street, and on her phone, she has an app where she could click a button that would alert or would call 911. So she clicked that button and it called 911, but that's all that button did, is it alerted 911. That's it, it didn't alert anybody in the building, didn't alert anybody, 911. So three minutes and 36 seconds later, the bad guy enters the building. Had that app also alerted the staff inside, they would've had three minutes and 36 seconds of advance warning to do something different than what they did. Had those first responders been looking at that chat, they wouldn't have been standing around outside wondering what to do. 'Cause they would've been hearing firsthand from people inside the building. It would've changed everything. Three minutes and 36 seconds would've changed everything. Real-time information from people inside would've changed everything. And it was that reason that Mr. Paul and Mr. Sean invited us to come up and share this app. So, that's what I wanted to share.
So one thing I wanna add to that is go back to the, go back to the screen, because...
The map?
Yeah, well, the alerts.
Okay.
He showed you number 10, we also have the ability to, let's say assistance needed, the kid's having a seizure, something like that. You click on assistance needed, the same type of a thing, it's gonna, it's gonna tell everybody, "I need assistance." The administrator's gonna have that in his hand, it's gonna say, "I need assistance in room 34." They can go to room 34 and help the kid that's having a seizure. So it's, it's, we like it because it's level 10, but we also see this being used a lot for those minor things of, "Hey, we got a lot, this kid's having a seizure, we don't want anybody to come in the class, let's do a lockdown." It's real time, dispatch gets it right away, they can communicate with all the officers, we have our two resource officers. We're proposing later, just to answer one question, every school will have the opportunity to have this. This is not just a high school app, all the buildings.
And a little side note that makes all this kinda tie together is our foundation donates this to all first responders. So every first responder in the valley will have that, okay? Couple of things that helps it, one of the things we, we really take a lot of pride in is that when we work with a district, we don't expect you to change everything you're doing and do it our way. Especially in districts when you've gotta, you, you really have it dialed in. And so what we do is all those apps, those are all customizable to you. In addition to that, every one of those types of alerts or incidents, the district has existing standard operating procedures. Well, what we do is, in addition to what those procedures are, and they're probably in three-ring binders or something like that, but all of those are also digitized and put underneath where you see that, where it says guidance and base user response. That's where your SOPs would live in the app, in addition to where they're at right now, okay? You also notice there that you can notify everybody that police are on site or police are en route, police are notified and so forth. So all of that just allows, and communicate at levels that you just can't do with, if we're depending entirely on, on 911, right? So any other comments?
So the other thing, the sheriff and the chief have had this presentation, I'm sorry that you guys, I didn't get a chance to prep you, but did they talk to you guys about how they felt about this, what's your first reaction? I think that's important for the board to hear from you guys, A, if you think this is helpful, and what, what the other guys said to you about.
Yeah, overall, we're, we're supportive. I think we'd all be naive not to use technology to help us in any type of critical incident, even, even in your case, non-critical incidents. The actual application itself, it'd be really nice to test it. 'Cause I mean, I've, I've come up with some questions and I'm not gonna take over your meeting and ask them now, but just on the use of the app.
I'll give you a card so you can hit, yeah.
But I'd like to explore some things that...
For sure.
Some things to consider, false alarms and the response that's gonna garner, is a real thing when we're dealing with our phones and apps, and so is there ways built in?
Kids playing in church with mom's phone.
Sure, and so, you know, it's like a 911 hangup, you call 911 and then we call back and parent answers, "Sorry, it was my son, guess what happened? We still come." And so there's those types of things to consider and work through that come to mind.
And, and for most of that, I know all your questions, but most of them, there's actually really, really good technical, technology answers to that. But those are absolutely great, there are great questions. So things like geofencing can help resolve a lot of that.
And those are some of the categories, you know, depending on what the incident is, let's use the big one, an active shooter. Is there gonna be confusion, are, are your staff trained that every teacher under that situation is gonna send the same alert? Or are we gonna get contradictory alerts? Some are saying evacuate, while others are saying lockdown.
We can, I'm more than happy to answer those, obviously we don't wanna take these over, but it's, they're actually very simple things that we do to prevent both of those things from happening, that we can answer real quickly.
And I think that's where testing it would, would be great.
I, I would like to just, if they're really quick.
Yeah, no, super quick answer, so the first one, sorry, Jason, you can answer this one. First one, as far as false alarms go, we make it almost impossible. First one, as far as false alarms go, we make it almost impossible to have that. So one of the things that if you want, or I can, go ahead, you go, you do it. Are you on already? Share it with them. Okay, so when it comes to, I don't know if you saw when he first logged in, number one, it asks for a face ID or a passcode of some, some kind, right? So that's the first step to get into the app. So if, well, you know, our, my two-year-old gets on my phone and starts playing around, still won't happen. Um, on top of that, to, everything on here is saved, and everybody who starts an alert, it will, it will show you who that is. So besides having the big red button to touch, right? I then have to select what alert type. So even if I hit the big red button on accident, right? I still have to select an alert type. Once I hit that alert type, and I'll send this one silently, and so we don't bug everybody else out there. I wanna show you guys this real quick. Um, let me just do this, for the heck of it. All right. So if I was to go here, and I go to alert history, I don't know if you can see that very well, but this, there, all of the, every alert that happens is saved. So I can click in on it, and I see what alert type was started, where it was started, who started it, at what time. Right, there's no more anonymous pulling the fire alarm, and hopefully we have video footage of who did it. You're gonna be tied to this thing forever. So there's, there's a handful of steps that we go through for that. And to answer the next question of multiple alerts going off at the same time, only one alert at one campus can be set off at a time, if that makes sense. So you can have multiple alerts be hit on different buildings and different schools, uh, but you can only have one alert running at one certain time. So if I was, if we were both sitting at Wasatch High School, right, and you went to start an alert, and I went to start an alert, and you hit it first, right? Then that, I would just receive the, "Where are you?" and "Are you safe?" or "Are you unsafe?" Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, does that answer your questions? Kind of?
At least the questions I posed, yes.
Okay.
Confirming process of that, where those different techno, technology tricks, nice.
Yeah. Happy to answer.
But actually, the overall question, we're very supportive.
I have a list of questions. Um, so I don't need to know details, but training? I'm sure you have some kind of training set up for teachers, and the admin, and the directors.
We do, that's part of the package.
Yeah, okay. Um, is this a subscription, is this up for just?
It's, yeah, there's an annual, there's an annual, we do a estimate.
How old is the app?
It's been around now for eight years, yeah.
Oh wow, so wild, so you own a lot of schools.
We, I can give you just in Utah, for example, uh, starting up north, we got Cache County School District, Logan City School District, Salt Lake City School District. Uh, we just, we had a, we, I don't wanna say helped, but helped, uh, Granite go off an RFP uh, for this. Granite School District Canons is currently getting their maps created. Uh, PO's already been received from them. We've got Juab that's coming on board as well right now. Uh, North, South Summit, and Park City School Districts will also be joining us very shortly. Um, so they're in the very beginning stages as well. Um, let's see, did I say Juab? Anyway, okay.
We're a little offended it took you this long.
Took a rester.
I asked him.
Took a rester, get in here.
I'm kinda wondering why it took you here.
Yeah, took a rester.
We apologize.
So, once we download the app, it doesn't matter if maybe the number of teachers change or anything, that the staff and faculty and teachers, admin, everyone at that school will have access.
Correct, yes ma'am.
We just tie to your active directory?
And it's constant training, and recurrent training.
One of, that's a great question. Um, we have, we have all kinds of training, like, uh, you know, active shooter training, that we, we do all kinds of safety training. But in regards to the app, there's, there's training that's built into that, the initial cost, so that everybody gets tuned up on it. But one of the, one of the things that a lot of people don't realize is that because it's a technology piece, it makes it really easy. I mean, our suggestion, when we talk about best practices with the school district, one of those best practices is every time you have a staff meeting, take, set ten minutes aside for safety training. And everybody go through the routine of, uh, we're gonna start this kind of, of a, of a, an, an alert. Here's what our SOP said, but we're gonna do an electronic, and everybody's phone or iPad or laptop lights up, and they get to run through the exact routine that they would go through i- if it were a live alert. So, the technology piece actually allows for more training to happen than in a normal setting.
And, and we're also more than happy to provide as much training as you guys want. We just charge about $10,000 an hour.
If there's a really, there's a really good wrestling tournament up here, we're here for training.
If I can, you've done, Sean, yes ma'am. I, I think our course of action here, and obviously the board understands, um, we get, we get hit up by, you know, hundreds and probably thousands, if you count the emails of, of people that wanna sell the school district, different things. It's a, it's a, you know, it's a pretty high bar for us to first take a meeting, and then second, to, to bring to you here at study session. So I, I think that, that's kind of an, you know, the, the given as to what we think about this is something that we oughta consider very seriously. We're, we, we like it. I think we do need to be careful, um, going through the process. We did, we did list it on, as an action item tonight, but I'm gonna suggest that that action item probably be tabled through this month. And then I, I think we need to take some time and meet, uh, more extensively with the sheriff's office and the Heber City Police, and do some things internally to kind of, uh, move this down the road a few more steps, and then if, if, uh, and, and then, and then take some steps from there, if, you know, it looks like it's something that we wanna, um, actually have a contract approved. We don't have any kind of a contract to approve tonight, so we will, we will just table it, um, in the regular board meeting. Um, what we would need tonight, I think would be sufficient, was just, is just a, a verbal from board members, if, if you, if you want us to continue, if you want us to continue pursuing, um, or examining, evaluating this program.
Can I, before you say that, let me tell you what these guys are doing for us. They started at 51,000, but through negotiations and armed wrestling, and me getting taken down a few times, they've agreed to do it for 34,000, which means they're giving us subscriptions for free, trainings thrown in, adding buildings that we didn't have before. So, the normal price was 51,000, it's now to 34,000, and that's because they want to have our business, and I think that's important for you guys to know where they have trimmed the, the price from what it normally is.
Just to throw the cherry on top, wait, I have family members that are going to your guys' schools, so that's the other thing.
And does that increase as we add buildings?
So right now, it has every building that we have. Obviously, the, the school we're discussing isn't included in that, so we would have to add that when that's completed in three years. But it's bus garage, it's this building, the pool, it's everything.
Was it named, but?
Yep, everything.
Paul's a pretty good negotiator, let's let you work on that.
I think, uh, I think part of what we have to be careful here is, we, we, we will have to work with the appropriate people to decide. We need to make sure that we keep ourselves on solid legal footing in the procurement space, so, you know, we, that, that could be a number of things. It, it might be a single-source type of thing. I don't know if you've worked with districts on single-source in the past. I've never seen anything else like this. It could be as simple as a, as a single-source, um, letter from our attorney, or do we have to do, you know, do we have to open it up for an RFP request proposal? And so that's some of the things we would be working on between this month and the next month. We'll bring it back to you next month, um, having made some of those decisions and, and done a little bit more vetting, it's just as appropriate ways for us to engage with with these guys, if you, if you would like us to.
I was gonna say, from a parent perspective, but also from a former teacher perspective, like, it's awesome. It sounds awesome to me. As for the sheer fact of, if I'm in my classroom, like, the high school I taught at was built as a bomb shelter, there's no windows. So, it's not like you could walk by a classroom and know what's going on in the classroom. So something like this, that you can easily notify, I think is awesome. I'm, I'm in favor of, obviously, working with city police, county, answering questions that these guys have. I'm in favor of moving forward.
I'm just kinda surprised that we don't, haven't had something like this here. So, for sure, we go through it.
Sure.
I'm a huge proponent, yes.
Okay, excellent, thank you very much for your time.
We appreciate your time and the extra time.
Thanks, guys. Very much appreciate it.
Next on our agenda, um, we're gonna invite, uh, Mr. Todd Johnson to the table. Whoever you wanna bring to you, Todd, or bring other directors or committee members. I know a board member, Mary Ann, was on your, on your committee. Kind of bring us up to speed on where you're at with your committee on our library and materials policy.
So we've been working four weeks now on the, uh, library and materials policy, and I'll first tell you who was involved on this committee, and many of them are here at the meeting more than tonight. But, um, board member Alan joined us, as well as Director Wad and Director Albert. And then we have three fantastic librarians that helped us, Erin Haywood, and Heidi Yurikewski, and Sally Baird. Erin is also here tonight. And, um, really enjoyed work on, work on this policy. I think that it's a, it's, it's a good thinker, and, um, really helped us solidify our process on how we would review sensitive materials in school, and that's in response to House Bill 374. And so that requires each district to, to, to build a policy um, in order to accomplish that task. And, um, in, in discussing this policy, we were given a model policy from the state. We were given UEA recommendations. Um, the Attorney General sent a memo, and then, uh, also in consideration was state law and, uh, state board rule. And so, um, what this policy is, what it matters, that you each have a copy of, is it first outlines, um, it, it first outlines that the importance of instructional materials in school, and I, I, I like that it starts with that. And it, it, it starts with materials that will be well-represented, and that will also, um, encourage high levels of thought and, um, study in our schools, and we want our libraries to be full of those materials. Uh, the other thing that I really like at the beginning of this policy is it establishes the value of librarians in our school district. And I think that, um, librarians, uh, have been valued in our district, and we have certified librarians in each of our schools. And, um, they're placed in the school, um, at the center of the school. Help, helping students with literacy and, and good, good instructional materials to read is, is very important, and I'm glad that that's placed first in this policy. Some of the other things that are outlined include the standard that our librarians would use in selecting materials, and in maintaining a catalog of materials in their libraries. The next part of the policy, if you would look to section four, outlines the review process. And I'll just summarize, the details are in the draft. But, uh, the, the, the first layer of the policy rests at the school level. So if there's a materials review request, that would immediately go to the principal of the school. And the principal would consult with the librarian, and anyone else he or she would need to bring into the con, conversation to identify whether or not the material challenged, um, is against the law, uh, is sensitive material as defined in the law. And if it is, the material would be immediately removed. Um, if that could not be determined, then, um, a district committee would be built. And so that's what the, the next portion of the policy talks about, is how the district committee would be built, and who, who would at least be on that committee. And, um, how they would conduct their meetings, and how a determination would be rendered. Um, it talks about, um, that the majority would, would make the determination. And, um, what materials they would be given in order to make that determination, and then how that would be communicated. The last part of this section then goes through, uh, an appeal. And so if the material got through the, the principal at the school level, and then got through the district committee, then there would be one last chance for an appeal, and that would go to the governing board. And, um, by definition in the policy, the governing board would then um, review the process of the policy to determine if the committee followed the process appropriately. And if the process was followed appropriately, then the decision would stand. And, um, finally, the last portion of this policy talks about communication. And communication for, um, requesting a review, and, uh, and, and the forms necessary for, uh, the review request, as well as the appeal, an application to serve on the review committee, our policy, and a list of materials that have received a review committee or appeals decision would be on the school webpage at the site level. And so anyone requesting to, to be on a review committee, or requesting a review, would look to the school site to find all of the forms necessary. And so, um, we, we feel comfortable bringing this policy to the board, and feel like that, uh, our committees met at least four times, and I think we've had really thorough discussions, and, um, what you're reviewing right now is certainly significantly different than what we started with. However, like I said, um, much of the language, uh, follows the state model policy, with some adjustments for our district.
So, let me just get it over with. So if someone, if, if, say a parent has a problem with something that's in the library, it goes first to the principal, who then works with the librarian and a committee?
Principal, librarian, and then the principal could consult with any expert within the school, but primarily principal and librarian.
But if he says, "No, I think it's good," and they want further, it goes to?
A review committee.
Which is built within the school?
District, district representation.
At school, and then if they, and then after that, I read down here, if, if it could go to the district, which when this, which then the school board would have to get involved?
Uh-huh, to review if the process was followed.
Not the book, not the content.
Okay.
Well, what I really like about this is at that level of principal and librarian, is they review, does it follow state law? And is it, is it legal or not?
As the number one indicator.
As the number one indicator, and if it's not, it's out. So I love the simplicity of how.
And that was just state out. There's been a lot of blood, sweat, and tears, and discussion, and emails, and it's been really good. I think this is a good product. Hopefully Erin agrees, I think so. This is a good product of a lot of work of a lot of people, but, I mean...
You have put a lot of hours into it. I heard all that. Mary Ann actually gave me the whole rundown.
Gave her a rundown, because she had a lot of questions, but it's, it, it was good. And it's just, I think we've done a good job of taking the model policy and making it Wasatch.
I agree.
So I, I, I love how it spelled out, I love the process. I like that, at the appeals committee, we reviewed the process.
Whereas people who are trained and who have gone to school for four, six, ten, Jason, I don't know how many years he's gone to school, twelve, fifteen, of, of, of training to weigh in on what is appropriate in an educational setting.
I don't even know, a lot of times it will go beyond, at first, so really, okay?
Erin, do you have anything you'd like to add, or join the discussion, or?
No, I don't necessarily have anything to add, that's it.
Well, thank you for your help with this, we appreciate it.
Thanks for asking.
Okay, be good. All right, thank you, Todd. Thank you, Todd. I told, we've got, we've got about five minutes, we can, looks like eight minutes. We can have Mary Ann give us an update on where we're at with the master board process. And then dinner is here, so. We've got about eight minutes, what our schedule is.
Do we need eight minutes?
What time?
Do we need eight minutes? I guess the question we had Tom and to ask last time, if we can do more than one level a year, and I asked at my board meeting yesterday specifically about that, for those who've been on the board a lot longer than Kim and I, you can if you want to, but it's just the, the certification is based on one year at a time. So, considering this is stuff that we do in the normal course of taking care of our job responsibilities, one year at a time should be just enough. So, I don't know if we necessarily...
So we certify every year?
Yeah.
And then is there a...
And then once you do, once you do all four, yeah.
Yeah, you, you just move up the levels.
Yearly, okay, this is year two, year...
And the content does change as you move forward, that's what they've done a lot on. So like, if you are re-elected numerous times, there's additional things that you can do as you work through it again. Pretty simple, pretty straightforward.
For the old board member that doesn't go away, just keeps, keeps training.
Who has institutional law, knowledge, and wisdom, right gentlemen? Who's staying through it and knows what they're doing.
I'm ahead of you, are you? That's not hard.
Now we got the competition going.
I think my percentage was higher than...
I haven't had even a chance to get that going.
I went on one.
Do we need to like, draw you back on? Do we need to do it?
We need a prize at the end.
Why don't you just kind of reset it every, beginning of the month?
Okay. I can do that.
I think you need a prize, like a golf game or something.
We all go golfing as soon as we're all done?
Why the hell I don't want to do that?
You go all the time, nevermind.
Thank you everyone, good discussion, we're going to adjourn now.